Call to order. Good evening, welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg meeting for December 5th, 2017. At this time, I'll ask folks if they could turn their cellphones to silent mode or off in respect to decorum of our meeting. Okay? And at this time, I'll ask everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We've been advised that Commissioner Buckman and Commissioner Sweeney will be arriving late this evening. At the moment, we have with us Commissioner Ritz, Commissioner O'Donnell, myself, and Commissioner Blanchard, and then the mayor, and we move forward. Our next meeting will occur on January 8th at 7:30 PM. Okay, are there any other meetings? Anyone needs to share at this time? Nope, hearing none, we move on. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the minutes from the November 6th, 2017 Town Meeting?
I have.
Anybody have any concerns, changes, enhancements they want to see?
I have none.
Nope, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented for that meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the Town Meeting minutes from November 6th as presented.
Thank you. It was your second for the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Very good, thank you. The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, it's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries three to zero. Commissioner Ritz, Blanchard, and O'Donnell voting, and Commissioner Sweeney and Buckman not present at the moment. Moving forward, we now turn to the deputy for the police report.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I don't know if this thing's on or not, but anyway. The Emmitsburg Community Deputy Monthly Report for the month of November. We had four thefts, and with that, those thefts were the street signs, some of the street signs around town, the Emmitsburg Community Park sign, the Paul's Pit Stop Clock, which was returned by the, some Mount St. Mary students, and there's been, like I said, some other stop signs and stuff that have been stolen in the town. The one stop sign was located at the rear of one of the Mount St. Mary students' house. They, myself and Deputy Whitehouse, have talked to some of the Mount students that live in town, and they are diligently looking for the Emmitsburg Community Park sign. They said, once they find it, they will take it to the Mount St. Mary Security Office, and we would greatly appreciate that. The other thing, we had two destruction of properties, six noise complaints, eight suspicious activities, two trespasses, those trespasses are the Dollar General, the two assaults, five alarms, 11 911 hangups, we assisted other agencies twice, and assisted the fire department once. This month, we had 23 talks cards, 14 walks cards, 37 patrol checks, and because of the weather, we are not riding our bicycles.
[laughing]
But I'm willing to ride a four-wheeler if we get a lot of snow, if y'all want to buy one. This month, we had 103 traffic stops, 69 of those were citations were given, 84 warnings, and one equipment repair order. We had one parking complaint, nine traffic enforcement selectives, four collisions. The arrests were, we had one traffic arrest. Let's see, the special assignments were, was the turkey trot. And additional information, we unloaded the drug box. And speaking of that, I want to make sure that, in putting in there, because when I emptied it, we had several needles in there. Now, thank God, they were capped and everything, but needles do not go in the drug box. You can take them up to the fire department, they have a Sharps container that they can put them in, but do not put them in there. And Deputy Whitehouse wanted me to note that he did three hours out of town at Mount St. Mary's this month, so.
Any questions for the deputy at this time? No, sir? Okay. Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, we turn to the Town Manager's Report.
Good evening. This is the Town Manager's Report for October, and I'll just highlight some of the areas. Under streets, staff repaired and put up solar lights on the "Welcome to Emmitsburg" sign on the east end of town. Staff also installed the right-turn-only signs on East and West Lincoln at South Seaton Avenue. We installed two new stop signs and posts at East Lincoln and Chesapeake Avenue that were stolen. Under the sidewalk and bridge project, staff repaired a water line to 104 West Main Street that the contractor struck during the project, and staff worked with the town contractor to repair damaged street-like conduit and wiring in several different areas of East Main Street due to damage caused by the sidewalk contractor, as well as repaired several curb boxes related to the project. In the area of the parks, staff conducted monthly maintenance checks in all the parks, playgrounds, walking trail equipment, ball fields, roads, fences, pavilions, et cetera. Staff placed stickers on all pet waste stations, reminding people to please only take two bags per pet. We've also put notification up on Channel 99. We had a contractor remove two dead trees in Memorial Park under the direction of DNR, and staff removed a few trees, smaller trees, from the dog park to clear the way for the fence installation, which was completed, I believe, last week. And a contractor, along with town staff, installed a pipe at the pool to divert water away from the area in the deep end, so the pool contractor could pour the new concrete Underwater, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level at 16.6 feet. I wanted to point out the well levels. I'm going to present this in a different way after talking to water staff, that each well has different levels of importance, and just giving an average of four wells doesn't give you an accurate depiction of where our wells are. So, as we know, the optimum level was determined to be May of 2011, so that's the number that we always go by. Well number one and number two are used sparingly. Well number three is our most important well, the one that we use most frequently. So if you look at the chart that I prepared, you'll see that each of the wells, well two is down three feet, well three's down 30, well four down 14, and well five is down 15 with a positive foot in well number one. These are good numbers, they're of no concern, it's just a guideline for us right now that we'll keep an eye on. Then we move to wastewater. We received 5.65 inches of rain or precipitation in the month of October. The average is 3.39, so we have a surplus of 4.65 inches over the last six months. Wastewater, again, we had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of October, however, we did exceed the plant's design capacity on four days due to two significant rain events. Trash, trash will be picked up on Tuesday, December 26th, due to the Christmas holidays, so there will be no trash pickup on Monday on Christmas Day. Again, I list some of the meetings that I had during the month of October, some noteworthy events. I wanted to point out that late notices for your quarterly water billing in September of 2017 were down by 70 notices. So 70 less people were late, and we can contribute that mostly to changing our due date to the 5th. So congratulations on approving that, because it has helped people get their bills in on time and saving them money and saving staff time as well. The contractor completed blacktopping the water line ditch on North Seaton Avenue, I'm sure everybody's aware of that as well, and the Boy Scouts painted some of the fire hydrants around town, they ran out of time for that project. And that's all I have for the Manager's Report.
Any questions for the Town Manager at this time?
I have one.
Sure.
The meeting attended on October 5th, there was a meeting with Pastor Talcott and the Town Planner regarding possible development.
Yes, that's in response to the zoning change that you approved for places of worship in B2. He is looking at a property and had questions about development and what the possibilities were.
Okay.
We have not heard from him since that meeting, but I know he had a lot of planning to do.
Thank you.
So development relates to a development in the event versus a development of houses?
Correct.
Okay.
Development of a place of worship.
Terrific, okay. Any other questions for the Town Manager related to the Town Manager's Report? No, hearing none? Okay, thank you. We now turn to the Town Planner's Report, as the Town Planner's not here, I guess we turn to the Mayor.
Right, I'll highlight some of the things that Ms. Cipperley's been working on, she's kind of outlined it here. At the Planning Commission meeting at the end of October, she prepared and presented a PowerPoint regarding the issue of short-term transient rental activity such as marketed and reserved via Airbnb and HomeAway. She attended that meeting as well and conferred with the Town Attorney to make the presentation. She continues to work on communications with the Flat Run Bridge and the sidewalk project. She completed and submitted the October 1st Quarterly Reports for 2017 for Community Legacy. Continues to work on permits as they come in, and attended the EBPA Board Meeting, and under upcoming projects, GIS, I don't know if you've seen, their staff's been out marking our water sewer lines, and Ms. Cipperley's been working on that. The MS4 permit is taking up the majority of her time right now, she's diligently getting the benchmarks met. One of the benchmarks was to complete some sediment control and erosion training. I completed mine today, and Ms. Nail is almost completed her, so we'll have two people that have certification. Emmett Gardens Playground, the MDE application was approved, and we received the permit at the end of the month. So what we'll need to do is get a town permit, our goal is to have the playground up come spring of 2018, because we'll have to do the ADA path and all, you know, the related items. That highlights Ms. Cipperley's.
Spring 2018?
2018.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all, highlights most of the areas of her report.
Any questions for the Town Manager, understanding it's the Town Planner's Report? No. Do you have any knowledge of the nature of the sidewalk complaints?
Oh, they vary. Damage to house, that's the majority of it, damage, cracks, when are they getting there, general complaints like that.
Okay.
That get referred to, miss Wasselshock at State Highway.
Someone contacted me about a crack in the sidewalk in front of their home, I told them to contact the Town Office. I don't know if that happened or not, so they were advised then, if I understand it, to talk to State Highway, is that correct?
What we do is we gather the complaints and we forward them to State Highway, and then they handle it either at their level or with the contractor, or both.
Terrific, okay, thank you. All right. Any other items? No? Okay, terrific, thank you. All right, now, we turn to, I want to make sure I'm in the right spot. Commissioner Comments, Commissioner Ritz.
Just this time of year, just wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Great, okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Buckman?
I just thought the Christmas tree lighting and the holiday events here in Emmitsburg are great, and I hope no one throws tomatoes at me, but I liked having it in front of the library, because it seemed like more people could gather and it was safer. I'll take the tomatoes now.
Okay, very good, thank you. Commissioner Blanchard?
Yes, Mr. President, a couple of things. First of all, I had the opportunity to represent the Town at the Veterans' Day Celebration and marking that. We started, of course, in front of the Legion, and went to the gravesite of Francis Xavier Elder, and then to the Doughboy and other cemeteries in town, so it was always an honor to represent the Town there. Discussion was made concerning next year, of course, next year will be the Centennial of the End of World War I, and so, of course, what was known as Armistice Day eventually becomes Veterans' Day, so there's going to be a lot of attention on that, so we're always sort of talking about planning for marking that Centennial. Moving on from there, kudos to Commissioner Buckman on the Waddle Waddle at Thanksgiving this year, that was a lot of fun, I thought. I enjoyed being one of the sweepers and on my bike there, that was enjoyable. And of course, last night, the Christmas celebration was wonderful, thanks to the Town Staff, thanks to Carriage House, providing the food and the drinks and the music and everything else, it was just a lot of fun. Also enjoyed basically standing in front of the library too, to be honest with you. Anyways, for what it's worth. And just kudos to the Town Staff for the decorations and the trees out front, and it's one of those things where, like, you know, these short days and incredibly long nights, it just helps kind of ease the pain, it seems like, of these incredibly many, number of hours of darkness, you know, just seeing the lights. So anyways, kudos to that.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that's what I got.
Sure, Commissioner Buckman?
It's been a long month, I forgot about the Waddle Waddle. The whole community came together for that. I had, what, three weeks to plan it?
Something like that, yeah.
But there is not one member of our community that said no to me, and that is the only reason it was really successful. All the sponsors were in the community, every donation came from the community, so it was really just another unifying thing that just shows how wonderful Emmitsburg is. And Mayor was very supportive, you guys were there helping out, next year you can help out for your kids. And Commissioner Sweeney was very, very, very instrumental in a lot of the planning, too.
Cool, okay, cool. Good. Okay. Let's see, yeah, the Turkey Trot was great, congratulations, Commissioners, in the short period of time you put together a professional event, and I didn't hear any complaints, I hope you didn't, in your survey after the event. I got to sweep with Commissioner Blanchard, we didn't have to sweep anybody, it was kind of nice, you know, everybody finished and they finished punctually. Let's see, I was able to attend the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting, that was, I enjoyed that. I was able to attend Commissioner, sorry, Mayor Briggs's Theodore Roosevelt Conservation Award, that was a nice evening. Mr. Mayor, your speech, the part that I heard, was very good, I enjoyed it. Moving from there, again, yeah, the Turkey Trot was a fun time. I did attend the Friends of the Emmitsburg Library meeting, and I tell you what, the volume of readers involved in that program, it seems to grow and grow every year, but their premise is, they don't want young people to let their reading skills slack over the summer, and as you have three academics on the board and someone with a strong history background, we know how important reading is, and as such, it's a great program, and they're expanding it this year to include adults. And the nice thing they do is they give prizes away, so they're looking for places where people will read, and they're going to advertise there, and simply you log in your time and you hit a certain threshold of reading hours, and you qualify for prizes, which is kind of a nice thing, but now it's kids and adults moving into the summer. The Friends of the Emmitsburg Library does the fundraising to pay for some of the prizes, but again, many of them are also donated, but they do a pretty sharp job there, so my hat's off to them. I was able to walk the dog park, I was very intrigued by what I saw. The only concern that I have is the fence twists that secure the fencing to the posts, they seem to protrude and be snags.
They're not done.
That's great to hear, okay, I'm happy to hear that. The tree lighting was fantastic, I think that is the largest turnout that I've seen in recent history. Mr. Mayor, I know you love the square, we all love the square, but that was pretty impressive, and I think part of it had to do, as somebody said, with the parking, the fact we're off the street, there's more room, and of course, your glowing personality at the DJ booth, so it was nice to see it here. Beyond that, let's see, oh, I did visit with, on Saturday, recent, the Frederick County Delegation to the State Legislature, and I did share some comments there, one was, I asked that there's a restoration of the highway user fees, the revenues, see if we can get those restored to the full funding level that we saw in 2011. I think that's aligned with the MML forthcoming statement, if it's not already in their hands. I asked them to aggressively promote recreational outdoor assets in our community and fund them, as they attract STEM jobs, STEM employers, and they help with STEM employee retention, and also it enhances our quality of life here. And I also shared that maybe at some future time, the Town might consider approaching the State Delegation for a significant piece of funding, or in phases, related to a pedestrian connector between the Town and the University. I know that echoes what the Mayor has said and what staff has put forward to them, but I think sometimes it helps to hear another voice to join the choir, and they seemed very amenable to it. So hopefully, at some future time, we come back and we give this consideration. So that concludes my comments at this time. So, moving forward, we turn to the Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Buckman, again, congratulations on the Waddle Waddle. Very well, Ron, you rose to the occasion, and very much, it was terrific last night, congratulations to the staff. I'm sorry?
My goodness.
I need a lavalier. This thing doesn't fit, okay. The, no, it was terrific last night, the staff did a great job, and we will probably have an additional tree downtown next year, we'll try it out here, but I've been in front of that, out there for a tree lighting, and where we had the music, everybody was commenting, it was nice to have the music there, and that covered thing, it would have ended up in St. Joseph Cemetery on some of the wind we've had in the past, rain and snow, so the weather permitting, it was terrific. The, just a couple of things, first of all, we have a holiday door decorating contest that's being hosted by the Town of Emmitsburg and EBPA. Enter by 3:00 PM, Monday, 12:18, and it'll be voting, and there are more information that'll be on our website, but again, we're trying to make up for the lack of light downtown during the construction phase, so we've gone around and talked to people about, maybe they would like to do their doors and add a little bit more color and activity down there. Richmond American Homes has put a contract in on 47 lots, the remaining 47 lots at, in our Brookfield subdivision, and they've been working with us for about a month and a half on that, and we'll see where that goes. That would bring with it also that they would have to level off a crest on Irish Town Road, which would allow, once they did that, then you'd have two-way service in, back and forth into Brookfield and Penbrook subdivision. Last week, we had a news conference, Mayor Canard and I, with the County Executive on November 30th, and we have one day a week, midday transit shuttle, a lot of moving targets here, okay. And so we have that, one day a week, it's today, started today, and we'll have it, look at it in six months, and in a year, we're trying to grow into where we have it, five days a week, but we have a small win here, we have half-day service, so if you go to, if you need something, you don't have to go down at 7:00 in the morning and wait, if you have something in the morning, wait to come back, or have something in the afternoon and have to wait there all day, so one day a week, we're accruing toward having that. Very thankful to the County Executive's staff, they really, it really means a lot that they did that. Those are two things, Mother Seaton Presentation, the fourth grade, I did contact MML about a class in Frederick on open meetings, and the Mayor of Burgess of Middletown and I are working on that now. I mentioned the press conference with the County Executive last Thursday, Mother Seaton Tree Decorating, we did that, and I think that pool update, the concrete was poured, do you want to do this, Kathy, or you want me to do this?
You can do it.
Okay. Concrete was poured, it's in the settling phase, probably where some electrical and plumbing work will be done, and then we'll stop there for the winter. Dog park, fencing's up, possibility of opening a dog park in, say, early spring, and square revitalization. We are connected to Brookfield for the very first time, Brookfield and Penbrook are connected, something that Commissioner O'Donnell wanted, and I'm glad we were able to get that for you, sir, and it connects our Town, Flat Run Bridge, did a little work on Saturday, they still will have to be done until 2019, and again, thank you to the Town Staff for everything they did, it was terrific. And, there we go.
Great, okay. Any questions for the Mayor related to comments or questions?
Just regarding the shuttle, I know it's a temporary thing, I guess the more it's used, the more, the better chances it'll become a permanent fixture, the midday run, any inkling on that is to?
Well, they're going to check it six months.
Six months?
They're going to track it a year, and then they're, they have some people who go down there regularly, every week, and so they're going to move them over into two seating for numbers, and then, and we'll build from there.
Okay.
It's a major breakthrough, we got, we have a midday service for the first time, so very happy about that.
Thank you.
Hey, Cliff?
How you doing? I was at another meeting, in a banquet at the same time, but I do have a comment.
For the Mayor first?
Yeah.
Can I double back to you, because I have a question about the bus? Mr. Mayor, clarification on the bus, and I apologize if you said this, but I missed it. It's Wednesdays, the bus run?
No, it's Tuesday, starting today.
Tuesdays? Okay. And will there be a morning run or no morning run?
A morning run.
That's fantastic.
There'll be an afternoon run.
So three on the day?
Three.
That's, well done, sir, very well done, thank you.
They really worked them and they responded.
Thanks, sir, all right, and the sidewalk, thank you, too. Mr. Sweeney, welcome, your comments, sir?
I just have two on the sidewalk project. The American Legion sidewalk up at their building, when they poured it, they cannot open the downstairs door, the concrete's too high.
It's not a perfect world.
I just wanted to let, I didn't know who to let know, but there's probably going to have to be taken back, that little piece is going to have to be taken back out and lowered, be poured lower. And then up on the last street going out of town, the little alleys that go down through, the one that did work, they got blocked off now, there was no signage or anything, I had somebody call me before I come, got home tonight, and said that the signage, there's no sign saying the road's closed, they must have closed that little alley road.
Out on the West Main?
Yeah, on the West Main thing, and then put no signage or anything, nobody knows closer, when they come down through, they got stopped and they got backed over, back out, they get it back out. So I told them I would mention it to them when they called, Seaton. Other than that, everybody seems happy with sidewalks, except for the parking spaces, they're unhappy we took one away, but I said we gained some on the side, isn't that correct? We're going to add some on the side? And I told them that, and...
By may, this is a much safer?
Right, I understand, and the concrete's out further, it's going to look nice when it's finished.
And it's designed for pedestrian use down there, too, we took back the square a little bit for pedestrians.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that, because a lot of people wonder why we took one out, but we're adding some on the sides, in case they didn't know. Okay, that's all I got, I think.
Okay, all right. Mr. Sweeney, it's good to see you again. All right, so we move now to Administrative Business, sorry. We have, no one signed up for General Public Comment, we do have individuals signed up for a Agenda Item Comment, okay, so we move from Public Comment to Administrative Business. One item preceding this, the Jubilee Parking Lot Exit has no stop sign, and cars are shooting onto the parkway consistently. The issue seems to be that the tight radius they're turning causes larger vehicles to knock over the stop sign. I don't know if that's our responsibility, it's the...
Jubilees.
It's Jubilees, okay.
There's no stop sign now?
Correct, and there has not been one there for some time.
That's why.
What we might want to suggest is perhaps some means by which they can protect it with, like, parking ties or something?
It's still required to stop there even if there's no sign, by law, common law.
Sure, right.
But it's their responsibility to put up and take down, we can't make them do it, but we can make suggestions.
Okay. If we could perhaps suggest, maybe they put like a bow of parking ties to protect it, like a buffer of sorts, because it seems to me it's always getting large vehicle damage, like tractor trailers or cargo trucks or whatnot.
Can't they just paint stop, done on the asphalt?
You could also do that, but I think, you know, the Uniform Code wants to have the red stop sign, I mean, but there needs to be some means to protect it, because that sucker gets it, you know, once a week, it seems like.
Somebody paid to put stop, wrote, painted on the road.
Right, right, you know, that would support it, too, but...
I've seen it knocked down a couple times, too, not just tractor trailers knocked over, but people with carts on the back, or pulling something behind their vehicle, tend to take it too far, take it right out.
Okay, so that relates...
They've even taken the light pole out, it was there before.
Correct, right, yeah. I don't want that, that is brutal. Okay, moving forward to Administrative Business, item number one, the National Interscholastic Cycling Association, this organization called NICA, I met with their leadership after our last meeting, so this is an update to what occurred. Prior to our last meeting, I did meet with sort of a scout who came to evaluate Emmitsburg and our trails. and our trails and what our community offers. I've got good news, I've got bad news and I'll start with the bad news. The trails as they stand, it was confirmed, they can't use them for competitive events because the trails need to be one directional. Now, that's not horrible for us, okay? The other part is, given the steepness of the slopes and some of the trails, those wouldn't be amenable to new riders in their view with what their program is about. However, they are profoundly interested in having events here. So, on the upside, they want to come into town. They want to have a convention of sorts of coaches coming to the area for clinics. They want to do training events here in town where they would be using the sleep-in. We visited there, we got a sense as to how many beds they had. They really liked the idea of what we had behind the community building here with the parking available and the open fields and that's something that they're very keen on seeing for part of their training activities. One of the things that they expressed an interest in at a formal level, the Scott Road Farm in time when that, the lease is up for the CREP program, I discussed that we have the intent perhaps to see trails there. I'm not gonna speak for a future board, but I would like to think that maybe that's something we can still do, we've talked about it a few times. There is camping that occurs there now with the scouts. They would be interested if camping could be inclusive to their organization. Let's see, the other piece is, they usually bring about three hundred cars to their events. They draw a lot of people. That was something that, you know, it surprised me once they talked about it and they confirmed it, but one of the stats that they shared and it's on the sheet that you guys were provided basically on the bottom of the page there, and yours might be more updated, but in 2016 they had ten thousand eight hundred twenty-six student athletes involved. That's a forty-three percent increase from the preceding year. They have four thousand three hundred plus adult volunteers who are involved in it, many of whom are specifically trained as volunteers and some of whom are trained as coaches. They have a very progressive coaching program where it's not just somebody saying, hey, go pedal, they actually have a fairly formal program. There are seventeen leagues running, they have races and camp programs, they have offerings, they're adding offerings this year in 2017, including a Maryland program. Now, some of the homeschool families who I spoke to are very keen on it because evidently they've, some of them have already heard about it and this is something they want to be involved in. It goes from sixth grade to grade twelve, so seniors in high school. It's for virtually anybody, you don't have to be a cyclist who's a mountain biker before, but they coach you up, that's kind of the nice thing. And they have this number here, six hundred thousand days student athletes and coaches spent biking. All right, well, that's a pretty healthy thing. Can't complain too much about that. The folks who came into town came from their headquarters, from Berkeley, California. Another person came in from, where is it, Asheville, North Carolina, another one of their executives. The Maryland lead came and also the Pennsylvania lead came. And when I spoke with the Pennsylvania leader, the Pennsylvania group, I believe if I have the number right, started with two hundred kids doing it, now they have six hundred kids doing it. And that's, that's a one-year change. And they actually do bring some other teams to Emmitsburg already and they ride here and I said, good, make sure they visit town. And they said, we always do that. That's, that's part of the program where they encourage the people not only to visit, but to stay in the town and to spend money in the town. And that's something I think is profoundly important for, you know, all parties involved. I don't want it just to be a give, I want it to be, you know, reciprocating relationship. So, that's pretty much the NICA piece. I'll say, I was impressed by their program. I had some very heady conversations with their Berkeley, California representative, their executive, and his language was my language, very, very careful about insurance and liability and training. I was really happy to hear that. It was not a seat-of-the-pants type approach and that I thought, I thought was a pretty good thing. So, my hope is they do come here, I hope the board will support them if they do come here. And that's more or less all I have on the NICA thing, unless you guys have questions for me related to it. No? Okay, all right. So I'll turn to the second administrative item. In an effort to promote the trails and promote the town and to show people what our trail days are like, Mr. Bob Mellor, a town resident, was commissioned. He has Rollum Video Productions. He does all sorts of things, video-wise, commercials and training films and I'm told weddings and, go figure. And he agreed to make a significant discount, two videos for us. This is their town premiere, but we have, he has his own video channel on, what, YouTube? So they premiered elsewhere secretly, I guess. So, nevertheless, I turned to town staff and if I could ask you guys to fire up the Monster and we could watch the two little shorts. And I think they take all of six minutes total, so. I think so, yeah, I would imagine. But the basic idea is just to promote what we have here in the community with the trail assets.
So I sit at the beginning of my class every day, let the fun begin.
Yeah, yeah, all right, yeah. Do you really?
No, 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 there's no fun.
That'd be pretty fun. And there, the play, the fun begins.
Ryan out here since snowed it up, wanted to get it back. I live right on the other side of the mountain on Friends Creek and the dog and I come out and walk almost every day.
Are the guys like the breakfast? It was sponsored by Getting Your Bicycle, Redhead Soda Fred and our friends at Moore. All right, hi, I'm Tim, welcome to Emmitsburg. These are our trails. We've got sixteen miles of stacked blue, professionally designed and built trail system here, we love it. We're very lucky to have it. We've got some great volunteers today coming in.
I'm here to work on the Emmitsburg Trails and it's always fun to help be part of giving back and keeping them clean for other users to enjoy also.
More sponsors are tools and are liability. So I want to talk to you guys about carrying tools and whatnot.
It's good to be up here, helps to be the trail because I like using it sometimes and helps get service hours and tools, it's good.
Great mountain bike trail up here at Rainbow Lake. The road riding around Emmitsburg is amazing with good drivers and great paved roads and hills. So to have that combination of a mountain bike trail and amazing road riding right here in Emmitsburg, that's why I'm here.
Emmitsburg is a small town in northern Maryland, hard against the Mason-Dixon line. We have a lot of road riding, not a lot of mountain biking. Come visit us, we'd love to have you and welcome to Trail Day.
So that's the first one. Here's the next one. More fun, more fun.
I'm Ryan Delaney from Fairfax, Virginia.
My name is Joe Raquel, I'm actually originally from downtown Frederick.
Hi, my name's Austin Steele with Trail Conservancy, we help build these trails.
Hi, Jason McCoslin from New York Springs, Pennsylvania.
Hi, I'm Juudal, I'm actually live in town in Emmitsburg.
Has a little bit of everything from technical trails, flowy trails.
Where we get the... It gives us a nice change of pace to the Frederick, Maryland trails. There's a little bit more smooth, there's a little bit more flowy than what the watershed has to offer.
Technical trails are kind of technical, but not too bad.
The stacked loop system, which gives people variety trails, beginner, intermediate and advanced and love riding these trails.
It's a great place to introduce people to backcountry riding that are interested in getting their feet wet and trying some bigger trails.
So though that's the town premiere, when it was attached to the Emmitsburg Trails Facebook, the first comment was, you don't know, you don't need to worry about that one, this one just, is a rehash of the other two, but there's no dialogue, it's just people writing. The first comment on the Facebook page was, where is this? So, that's kind of the goal we're going for, is to get people, you know, come here and visit and so on. So, my hope is that for tourist promotion will have some effect. One of the things I'd like to do with Bob is kind of do a trail day event where we have people in town in the morning, filming them maybe at a restaurant in town enjoying themselves and then on their way up the mountain and later having a refreshing adult beverage afterwards perhaps, depending on the market. So, those are out there, people are responding to them very positively and that's kind of where we are with the videos, because I know there were some questions.
Very well done, very well done.
Thank you, sir. Bob Mellor did it very well, Mr. Steele, he also is in video production, he helped a lot also. I mean, it was, again, one of those events where it's, it's a team effort and the nice part was the money was spent here in town, you know, with the town business doing the production. So, happy to, happy to have that message out there for our community. Okay, so, any other thoughts, comments, concerns related to administrative business today? No? Okay, great, all right, well, thank you. We now turn to, well, there's nothing for a consent agenda, so we now turn to the treasurer's report?
Yes, Mr. President.
Sure.
Treasurer Report, Town of Emmitsburg Cash Activity as of November 28th, 2017. Five million, four hundred forty, four hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred nine, seven thousand cash balance November 1st, 2017. Operating balance forward, five million, two hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars. And as what always follows, are the top ten, top ten check amounts, the vendor names, descriptions, et cetera. And of course, at the top of the list is gonna be Making Waves, because of course, Drawn Three, completion of the pool shell, so that's gonna be the largest one right there.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions for the treasurer related to the report? Okay, hearing none at this time, we move on. Okay. Planning Commission Report?
I don't have a presentation on...
The only thing that Ms. Sipperly mentioned was, at the planning commission, they did discuss the short-term rentals.
Okay.
The PowerPoint and presentation on that, they had a discussion, I believe it's coming back again at some point.
Any questions related to that or comments from the board? No? Okay, all right. We now turn to our agenda items. Our first agenda item is a resolution adopting the Frederick County Hazard Mitigation Plan, pending vote. Okay? So, Mr. Mayor, or, oh, very good. We have a guest speaker, yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to come here and...
Yes, sir.
Bring you up to date on the plan. I'm Dennis Dudley, the Director of Emergency Preparedness for Frederick County and I'm part of Emergency Management for Frederick County. The Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 laid out requirements and incentives for planning. But when we talk about the requirements, if a disaster were to happen in Emmitsburg or anywhere in Frederick County, if you don't have a mitigation plan, you're not likely to get funding. What the planning allows you to do and the partnerships between the county and the municipalities and the state is to make you eligible without an expense. The county took the burden of bringing the team together and hiring Dewberry to do the plan so we could do a consolidated plan that applied to all the municipalities and relieve that burden from you. If you do not adopt the plan, you are not eligible for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Program Funds. Now, to take a step back, it's been two years since this process started, started in 2015. Emmitsburg, Jerry Muir and Jim Glick were part of the committee and worked in the plan, so Emmitsburg had a part from the beginning. The projects that I see in the plan, Emmitsburg is moving forward on. So all those are good things in case you need hazard mitigation funding or actually emergency funding. But this makes you eligible for hazard mitigation grants when they're available and based on the amount of disasters going on in the states right now, that's not likely, but that could lead to funding in the future based on the actions that have happened in these disasters. And if there is a disaster and snow season is coming, so it's a good idea to have a plan adopted before snow season, you are eligible for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Assistance by adopting the plan. If you have any questions?
I don't think we do. Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming up.
No problem.
Appreciate you also getting us moving forward on this, or moving further forward. Let me not, you know, sell you guys short. We're moving forward before.
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay, very good. So, we have the language here, the resolution is here.
Yes.
Is this something you want us to have read or, okay, do you want me to read it for you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, oh dear.
Screw the practice.
Okay, very good. A resolution adopting the Frederick County Hazard Mitigation Plan, be it resolved and acted and ordained this fifth day of December 2017 by the mayor and Board of Commissioners of the Town of Emmitsburg, Maryland pursuant to the authority granted to them by the laws of Maryland and the Charter of the Town of Emmitsburg do whereas, the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 as amended requires that local governments develop, adopt and update natural hazard mitigation plans in order to receive certain federal assistance and whereas, a Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, HMPC, composed of various county agencies and representatives from Frederick, from Frederick County, the city of Frederick and the towns of Brunswick, Burkittsville, Emmitsburg, Middletown, Mount Airy, Myersville, Newmarket, Rosemont, Thurmont, Woodsboro and Walkersville, was convened in order to study the risks from and vulnerabilities to natural hazards and to make recommendations for mitigating the effects of such hazards on Frederick County and its municipalities and whereas, a request for proposals was issued to hire an experienced consulting, consulting firm to work with the HMPC to update a comprehensive hazard mitigation plan for Frederick County and whereas, the efforts of the HMPC members and the consulting firm of Dewberry, in consultation with members of the county's public, private and nonprofit sectors, have resulted in an update of the Frederick County Hazard Mitigation Plan, including the Town of Emmitsburg. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and Board of Commissioners of Emmitsburg, Maryland, that the Frederick County Hazard Mitigation Plan dated May 2016 is hereby approved and adopted by the Town of Emmitsburg, a copy of the plan is attached to this resolution. Okay. Now, any questions or concerns for staff? Is there a motion to accept the resolution as presented?
I make a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Very good, thank you, ma'am. The motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, it's been seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero, full board present. Very good, okay, thank you.
I have a copy of that plan if anybody wants to read it. I do have it and I have read it, so if anybody wants to read it.
I'd be curious, yeah.
Sure, okay, great. All right. And Mr. Dudley, thank you very much for coming up.
Okay, that would be great, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. We now turn to... Okay, the last comment was they are available also at all Frederick County public libraries, is that correct? That's fantastic, okay, great. We now turn to our second agenda item. This relates to, trying to get it right, update on lagoon storage operations at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, thank you. I believe I'll give an initial presentation, then we have a contractor representative here as well, answer any questions or fill any gaps that I may miss. On October 2nd of this year, myself, the mayor and Mr. Fissell met with the contracting staff out at the wastewater treatment plant to go over the lagoon storage update, the plan for the winter 2017 through the fall of 2018. And in your packet, you'll see the highlights of that meeting and the contractor's plan for the upcoming season. Bear with me. We'll start with, there are, will be, there was not any fall cleanout this year, so you did not see any hauling days in the fall. You might have seen some contractors out there just doing basic lagoon work. So, they're gonna start their operat- So they're going to start their operations, inbound loads may begin on December 15th. The inbound loads can run from December 15th of 2017 through February 28th of 2018. During this time, they're going to have their drivers' gravity discharging material in the lagoon under the top cap. If you've gone out there, if you've seen there, there's a significant top cap on the lagoon that's crusted over. Their plan is to put the material in underneath the top cap to not break the cap. Because when they stirred over last season, when they stirred and the cap was broken, we had the significant odor based on environmental and the break of the odor, or, excuse me, the break of the cap. Nothing gets hauled out during that time period. It's only coming in. And so that's the winter schedule from December, December 15th to February 28th. There is a note here, MDA, the Maryland Department of Agriculture, sets the land application regulations. They set the dates. So next year, tentatively, they have their dates for winter ban to begin a month earlier on November 15th. I believe that's subject to change, but that's the tentative schedule for now. So the spring cleanout will begin March 1st to May 1st, excuse me. And that consists of 12 hauling days where they're going to haul material out during that timeframe. The hours operations would be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. They're going to attempt to get as much out as possible in the earliest part of March when the temperatures are still cool or cold. Any mixing will be done under the top cap to minimize the odors. Therefore, they will not be breaking the cap again. Their goal is to do everything they can to minimize any disruption to any odor as well. The material will be pumped from under the top cap and loaded directly into the tanker and their intent is to do it in the 12 hauling days. Any material left in the lagoon after those 12 hauling days will be removed in the fall when the ambient temperature cools again and fall land application ground becomes available. Truck loads will not, loaded or empty loads, will not migrate through town as they did the past season as well. That's where we got the complaints of possible odor around 140, Silo Hill, that part of the town because the trucks were coming through town. They're no longer going to come through town. The fall cleanout will begin October 1st. So we've gone through the winter inbound, you've gone through the spring cleanout, then when you get to the fall cleanout, October 1st, that again will consist of only 12 hauling days. The operations again will be 6:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. They're going to try to do it as late in the fall as possible so the temperatures will be cooler. During all these operations, they're going to have a field operator on site to make sure that everything is being done appropriately. Again, they're going to be mixing under the top cap to minimize the odor. Like I said, 12 hauling days. Any material left in there will be after the 12 days. They're going to quit at 12 days no matter where their level is and it will remain in there till the spring. And again, their trucks will not come in or out of town. So they've addressed our concerns that were brought forth by you as the board as well as the public and this is their plan for this upcoming year of operations. And again, there is a representative here if anybody would have any questions of them as well.
Okay. Do we have questions for staff first?
For staff?
Just some procedural questions. In the first part, the winter inbound loads, there's no timeframe designated that I'm aware of.
Right.
Can we do that? I would like to see us do that.
We've had discussions with them over that, over the time for that part of it, and we did not come to an agreement on the time for that one as yet.
Okay. I mean, I would prefer...
Because there's some, and you can answer that question better than I would, but there was a reasoning, there was a reason on their part for it.
Sure. On our part, though, I think either daylight hours, given it's winter, or hours of office being open, so we have a quicker response if there's an issue on their end. I think that would be in our best interest. The other piece is for the odor mitigation, we added straw.
Yes.
The layer, I don't see any language here about, well, was it hay or straw? One or the other. Whichever was the better of the two. But the odor mitigation...
It's still in their plan. It just wasn't incorporated into here. There's still plans to put the straw down. They put a significant, a level of straw down
Right.
Last season.
Right. Just again, you know, to be prepared for that, the idea being that it would need to be in writing, I think, to see that it's part of the program that we're doing.
Well, this isn't, this is just their plan. Their contract has already been approved and everything. So this is their plan. It is in writing and emails. But since that cap is not being disturbed, there's really no need for the additional straw. I believe they will do it. And again, he can answer your questions better than I can if it's needed, but if there's no break in it, you don't really need the straw anymore.
The top cap right now is pretty thick.
Okay.
It's actually got a grass layer on it. So the intent is not to disturb any of that, the top cap layer at all.
You can't hear in a, they're in a great interest.
If you could use the mic and say that, make your remark again.
Okay.
And then, let's do this. If you can hold off on your remarks for a moment, let me finish with town staff and I'll come back to you. And I don't mean to shuffle the deck too much on you, but just to finish with staff so I understand what's being presented also. There's mention of 12 hauling days. Are those consecutive days?
Again, that's a question for him.
All right, fair enough.
I do not believe they are consecutive days because it's depending on the weather as well.
Okay, so it's 12 days out of the month that they have?
Out of that timeframe. So if you've got March 1st to May 1st, that's 12 hauling days in that period
In that frame, okay.
With their goal to do it as early in the season as possible because of the temperature.
Okay. Terrific. I'm just trying to understand on our end. Okay. All right. And that's it for my questions to staff.
Okay.
Now, we're still shuffling. Any other questions to staff related to this information? Okay, hearing none. Okay, so, thank you. If you would introduce yourself and your organization and then restate your remarks related to, I believe it was, the hay cap and we'll go from there. Yeah, sure.
Right. Okay. Yeah, thank you for having me. My name is Mike Oliver. I'm the General Manager for the Mid-Atlantic Region for Denali Water Solutions. Kathy asked me to come up to, you know, answer any questions you guys may have, so...
Sure.
You know, on the top cap or the hay straw layer, the cap itself is built a pretty thick cap. It's probably six, seven, eight inches thick in areas. It's actually got a grass cover on a lot of it.
Right.
So it, throughout the whole lagoon, it's completely covered. So the intent is just as Kathy said when we met out there, is to do any kind of mixing underneath the cap, whether that be with pumps recirculating before we start hauling. We've installed some PVC piping that goes down the banks and it actually goes under the cap right now. So when the trucks come in, they will hook to that, the two loadout stations that go right underneath the cap. The hauling days, it will not be 12 consecutive days just because of weather.
Okay.
A day like today, with rain would have got us on a half a day or something. So since we only have a 12-day period, if there's a significant forecast of rain throughout that day, we probably won't even try to start in the morning. So within those couple of months, we'll just try to pick good, clear days we can maximize and really haul some loads out, so.
Okay. For the winter inbound loads, can we get some assurances that this isn't going to happen at 3:00 o'clock in the morning or at 8:00, you know, 8:00 at night or like daylight hours or at least operational hours? Let's say 8:00 a.m. to, or what is it?
What we have in here 24/7. What we have in here 24/7 for the inbound loads.
It's in the contract.
Yeah. We can, you know, we can revisit, I guess, if we have to.
If we could, that would be a happy thing.
See what the truck schedules kind of look like. But our intent right now is to do the 24/7. And it's not, it's not like it's 50 loads a day. You know, it might be 12 or 15 on a bad day. You know, a good day might be a few loads, two loads, three loads. So really, the bulk of it is going to happen during business hours, but there is times where we have to have access after hours.
Okay. And just curious, why is that? I mean, where are you hauling from?
Well, the customers we service are 24/7 plants. So, you know, we haul all hours of day and night, seven days a week.
Is this a load that can be held overnight in a tanker, though? I mean, is that possible?
Maybe sometimes.
Yeah. I mean, is that unrealistic, though? I just don't know.
No. I mean, there is times where you have a load propped or, you know, you're missing the window by an hour or two and you can wait, but...
Okay.
I think Kathy... Is somebody there at all times while there's a truck there?
Not during unloading, other than the truck driver itself, but during cleanout operations, yeah, there'll be a, you know, an operation supervisor or supervisor lead or something like that on site.
How will they get in when the fence is closed to have a key?
Yes. Yeah. So I believe last year, there might have been a daisy chain set up on the lock there. Two locks hooked together, so.
I know the later hours shouldn't matter too much because I don't know how many, I think there's only one farmhouse there up above it. Yeah, and then it might interfere with them. But the town, I don't know if it interfered too much with the residents of the town, but...
Okay.
If you can get them in before then, a bit of help, but I guess you're going to have to get it in when you, if you missed the end of the day, 4:30 is when we clear it, so there's a lot of people wondering something, are hauling, go quit at 4:30.
Right. Is there a placard that travels with the key, like emergency contact numbers for town staff?
Yeah, that was incorporated in the original contract and they have all our contact information.
And that travels with each driver? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Okay.
Last year, a lot of the problem occurred because we got a huge snowfall. And that pushed out the operations, causing it to smell more because then the wind shifted. What's in the plan? How are we addressing that so that does not happen again?
I'm not exactly sure of the event last year. The snowfall...
Go ahead, Kathy. What were you...
That's not what happened.
Oh.
They, there was a lot of things that they learned from last season that didn't work well. There was, there was rain, there was the, you know, the high winds, there was heat. There was a lot of things that they learned from this year with their 12 spring haul-out days. It dragged on much longer than 12 days last year. They mixed last year. It was the big reason why there was the odor in town when they mixed. And then you have a wind event, you have the heat.
They broke the cap.
Right. Correct.
Yeah.
So a lot of things contributed, you know, to the odor last year that they have tried to rectify this year.
I don't believe there was a cap on it last year.
No, there was not.
Truthfully, I think, you know, during the spring cleanout, they came in and put six inches of hay on it and then let it knead into the hay.
I have one other question, just so I understand. That cap, which is about this thick, does it rise and fall as you add things to it or is it up high already established? And then if it rises and falls, then it cracks around the sides, are we able to add more hay or straw, whatever that is, to the edges just to keep from that odor even occurring?
Yeah, we'll try to protect the cap as the level rises. You know, right now, I can't remember, I was out there last week, I can't remember what footage on the ruler it's at, but yeah, as it rises, the cap's going to float and come up with the liquid level. So there will be some filling that probably has to be done at some point throughout the winter around the edges there.
Anybody else?
I guess my question was, how do you ensure that the cap doesn't break? It sounded like you said there's PVC running under already.
Yeah. We installed something to go underneath of it.
That's your conduit in your access point to get in.
Right. So there's two unload stations right now and it's just two pieces of eight-inch PVC that go down the embankment and right underneath the cap. So everything that goes in will go underneath the cap and no disturbance of the cap at all. So the PVC right now is a good foot to 18 inches underneath the existing cap. So as that all rises, you know, if we fill in as it comes up as need to be, it's just going to be that much further down on the bottom. So, you know, we're also testing a bacteria down in Georgia right now that they say is working well and they've only had it tested for about two weeks now, but they say in the first two weeks, it's showing some promise. They're testing on a lagoon down in Georgia. It's for two things. It's for solids control and some odor control. So if they have a good test down there in Georgia, then we're going to go and try to do a pilot up here and see how it works out. But with the cold air, they say 45 degrees. Once it gets below that, the bacteria may not work. So we're getting in the middle of winter here and probe down underneath the cap and see what the temperature is on the cap. If it stays, you know, 45 degrees or above, maybe we can do a pilot, you know, here in the winter with that stuff.
Maybe we can bring down some blue-green algae, you know?
Yeah. We got plenty of it.
No waxy or waste up top. Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Sweeney, did you have another one? No. Mr. Ritz?
I don't have any more questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Blanshard? Okay, very good. Staff, any other comments before we bring public comment forward?
No.
Okay, very good. Okay. Mr. Oliver, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming up. Okay. So at this time, I call Richard and Paula Lindsey.
Hi. Good evening. Richard Lindsey, 16737 Creamy Road, Emmitsburg. Before I get, we didn't talk any, I heard very little talk about odor deterrent and the cap. The cap, the gentleman said, is about eight inches. Originally, when we put that, when they put the cap, it was 12. So it's been a significant amount of months since we put the cap on. So it would seem to me like if we're going to be proactive like we talked about in our earlier meetings, why not go ahead and add odor deterrent again with some fresh mat? It won't disturb the grass that's growing and we, I mean, it is straw. It's a straw mat that Phil put on and it is, but it has deteriorated. And he, quite frankly, even blows, blows off some of it. So that's just a suggestion. I want to, I guess my first question is, the original work plan called for 12 days of hauling in and 12 days of hauling out. Now, I see we've dropped, because it said in the original, the other plan said limit the hauling events to 12 working days in the spring and 12 working days in the fall and then in parentheses, unless otherwise approved by the Town of Emmitsburg.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was going to answer his question. Go ahead.
Okay. No, we can't. Okay. My concern with dropping the days in and days out or not having the same amount, if you haul X number, and I believe the number that Phil told me last year, we brought 350,000 we brought 350,000 gallons of material, I think, into that, into that last year. Now, you can't do that in 12 days. So, if you bring that much in, and we're gonna haul 24/7, which I thought we had agreed to, even hauling in was gonna be during daylight, but apparently not, but, um, if we bring that much in, and we only allow 12 out, we're gonna end up with a lot of material there over the, the hot, humid summer months. Now, I want to congratulate you all and, and the contractor. It was a decent summer. We had, uh, the, the mat and the odor deterrent, we, it was a decent summer from an odor deterrent standpoint. But if we have extra gallons, thousands of gallons of material in that lagoon, it's not gonna work, I, I don't think. Because the goal was to get as mu- much of the material out of the lagoon when we have the haul out. But if it, if the hauling in, hauling out doesn't somewhat balance, you can't, you're not gonna be able to get it out in the 12 days.
Then you're gonna have to go 24/7 on the hauling out, which you don't want. On the daytime, if you don't want it at nighttime, then you can get...
I didn't say I didn't want it. All I'm saying is for a balance.
But that would be the only one, when, when I brought that up, you raised your hand. You said, yes, there is one house there, that's why I was wondering why if the car, if the only ones living out there is, is you and then one house on the end, um, would be bothered by the trucks going in there.
Well, does that mean we don't care?
No, no, it's not that, I mean...
Well, that's what it sounded like, Mr. ...
You want to get as much out as you can, so I didn't know if I, the only way that you can do that is to do it 24 hours.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure, and I can't speak for the contractor. I, I don't know if they can actually, when they, when they haul it out, and Mr. Oliver would, would know this, when we haul, when they haul it out, I think they, they apply it in the field. I don't know if they can do that in a nighttime operation or not, that'll be a question for him or not.
I don't know.
See, right, we don't know. But these are the things, that's why I say, I think we need to work on that balance. That was a concern I had, or we had. We talked about the layer, the, um, the item, and you all didn't mention much about it, but it says, "Truck loaded, trucks loaded or empty will not migrate through the town as they have in the past." Now, what I hear from that is that Mr. Snyder's, when those trucks come out, and the predominant movement for those trucks coming out is southbound. That means they cross that at-grade intersection.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes. You guys have heard me talk about these intersections before, they, they've always scared me to death, and they continue to. If we discourage him, his trucks not going through the, using the interchange, that means we're gonna impact that intersection more with trucks. Now, last year, when Mr. Snyder and I talked, and I know he's not here, but I, I'm pretty certain his words to me was, he was encouraging his drivers to use the interchange from a safety standpoint. If I'm reading now that we're, they're not gonna, that means we're gonna impact that intersection. And I'm telling you, folks, we're gonna be asking for trouble when we do that. That intersection cannot handle, and I, I just happened to think about it as I was coming across Creamery to go home today, about the time Mother Seaton School was coming out. Now, that means that's gonna be, those trucks are gonna be coming out there all hours of the day, and that crossover's extra wide anyway, which it shouldn't be, it ought to be narrowed down, but anyways, am I...
I was taking a drink, I said it down hard, I'm sorry. Keep going.
Keep going.
But, um, these were, those were our, our main concerns. So, what I'm hoping to come from this is that we can get an agreement from the contractor to maybe rejuvenate the, the straw mat, add odor deterrent again, and please take in consideration, I, I know your folks at Emmett Gardens and all don't want those trucks going through their community, I don't blame them. And remember, by me being, it's, it was, it's, from an odor standpoint, it's just as easy for Paula and I to say, don't send them to, because we're gonna get more of the odor from the trucks when they, on us, too, so... But I'm telling you, folks, and I, I've been retired a number of years, but I'm telling you, there's at-grade intersections with tractor trailers.
Right.
It's scary, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Lindsay, thank you for coming in. Mrs. Lindsay, thank you for coming in. So, we turn to staff, taking the, let's go to the intersection question at first.
They're not using that intersection, they're gonna go further north to the intersection that is at grade, um, just north of the, um, rest stop. They're not, they're, they are not using that intersection that Mr. Lindsay is speaking of. They're gonna go further north, where you have great sight distance to make their turnaround.
Okay.
No, not Steinware, it's, it's, um...
At North Seaton?
South Seaton, or North Seaton.
North Seaton Avenue? Okay.
Yeah, you can only go in, you can't come out.
North Seaton.
They'll be exiting from a different point than they're entering, the wastewater treatment plant? I'm...
They'll go north on 15, they'll come out.
Oh, okay, they'll come back to 15?
And they'll go north on 15, they're not gonna cut across, um, northbound 15 to go south. They're gonna go north and come back, if they've gotta come south, they're gonna come back, they're gonna make the U-turn way up there and come down. Where it is, you have significant sight distance.
Right, right, okay.
So, that, that, um, that addresses that concern. The concern over the 12 hauling days, I was under the impression from Mr. Snyder that, um, they were gonna step up the number of trucks that they used. Because last season, they didn't, they didn't run a lot of trucks through, they had a lot of downtime. This year, I believe, my understanding in, um, is that there is a significant more amount of trucks. They're gonna be in and out during that 12 hauling day from 6:00 to 6:30 to get the loads out, is the way that it was explained to me, and then I don't recall what the other point was, I apologize. The straw, the odor, which I can...
Refreshing the mat and adding odor deterrent, uh, proactively. And, and I think that's something Commissioner Buckman and I are in accord on. There's, there's a concern, I mean, just the logic of it is, if you have a basin as such, and the content in the basin hits the edges here, if it lifts, you create some gaps there, and there will be odor, and we're wondering if...
Or if it drops, it would crack, right?
Or if it drops, it'll, right, it'll, uh, cavitate. So, if we could pursue this idea of adding, like, proactively having hay on site, or organic material, hay, straw, whatever we're using appropriately, to have that on site to meet the float piece as we add, so that way we can get after it. And also, if there's a means by which timing can be such that when we anticipate the float of the cover, the cap, and therefore creating float gaps, maybe if we have odor deterrent in the content, maybe that'll mitigate the odor.
Yeah, and I can, you know, Mr. Oliver's here, and we can certainly communicate that, and I wouldn't see why they would be opposed to taking that proactive approach. They have made a lot of changes in their process, so I'm sure this would be something that they'd be willing to accommodate.
Sure. Mr. Lindsay, I'll ask you a question, and just an affirmative or negative would be fine. Last year, we had a significant odor issue, they added another layer of hay to it. There was the, the, the first application seemed to blow off in bad, in, in hard wind. Do you feel that made a difference? Okay, great, and then Mr. Lindsay said the affirmative, yes. Okay, very good, so, so the hay is working, I mean, that, that's a piece of it. Okay, so from our perspective as a board, we're being made aware of this? Is there anything we need to be made aware of beyond this, or is there any other material that we should be...
No, this is, this is just an update so that you are aware of, um, the processes beginning, um, probably December 15th.
Next week.
Terrific, okay. Mr. Sweeney, anything else?
It begins next week.
Next week, very good, okay. Mr. Lindsay, come on back up, yes, sir?
Can we ask Mr. Oliver about, uh, I, because I'm, I'm really not sure about the, if they can, when they haul the material out, because when they haul the material out, it's when they apply it to the fields.
Okay.
And that's what, that's, I, I think, and that's why I want to know if we can do that operation at night.
Okay.
That's why I was sitting back there.
Terrific, all right.
The reason that we, we chose these hours was the, the noise disruption in the evening when people, if you do it from 6:00 AM to 6:30, the majority of people, not everybody, are, are at work, and that, I know that you work at, out of your house, but the majority of our in-town residents are at work, and that you're coming home, if you have a picnic, or you have outdoor functions, you know, the, the, the operation is wrapping up, and so that's why that was, those times were chosen to minimize the disturbance.
You, you're not compelled to comment, but if you're willing to, we're happy to hear what you have to say.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not everyday practice that you would do, you know, land application in the evening, or, or over midnight hours, but...
Sure, sure.
You know, as you see, at certain times of the year, farmers do work at night, but, um, we do have some, some applications where we do, you know, land application at night, but, um, in this process here, it's just as Kathy said, we would ramp up the trucks. If we weren't prepared, we know we only have 12 days to operate. If we're not prepared tomorrow morning, we just won't operate. You know, we'll do it when we have all the trucks on base, and, uh, you know, that could be 40 or 50 trucks a day coming out. Not, you know, individual 40 or 50 trucks, but 40 or 50 loads coming out of the, of the lagoon in one day, so...
Is it possible to have hay on site or something on site?
Yeah, yeah, we...
The gaps and the cracks, perhaps?
We could have some there to, uh, you know, to take up, but as your material's coming in daily, I mean, it's always gonna be on the rise. But I, you know, I would say, look, we're gonna do everything we can to, to, you know, help keep these odor, odors at a complete minimum, so... You know, as it, as the gap's starting to get wide, if, if we need to fill it in, then that's what we'll do.
Great, okay, thank you.
Well, I was just gonna say, and I think maybe you just answered that, if it's always on the rise, which obviously it's always gonna be on the rise, can there be just additional put there on the edges, so that as it's rising up, it's naturally falling into those gaps?
Uh, yeah, like, if you were to go out there now, there, there is hay that's all around, uh, the liner now, up on the banks. You know, so, some of that might just naturally fill in the gaps, kinda as you were saying, but, um, you won't, you won't walk the whole lagoon every day and, and fill in a little bit that you, that you rose. I would just say, look, we're out to, you know, keep a good monitor on it every day, and, uh, you know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a weekly thing, and maybe it's a, you know, maybe it's a twice-a-week thing that we gotta fill in some spots, but I think it's just gonna be, uh, you know, adjusting on the fly as we go along.
Great, thank you for coming up.
All right, thank you.
Everybody comfortable with moving forward, or do we have other, Mr. Lindsay, I'm sorry, yes, sir, please come on up, yes, sir? Sure, sure.
Because, uh, the PVC pipe that they put in, I believe, I do believe that's gonna be a real advantage, because they're not gonna be disturbing the material which generated the odor, so, uh, I commend them for, uh, the contractor, Mr. Snyder, for doing that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate you sharing that. Okay, um, board, are we okay moving forward to the next agenda item? Okay, very good, okay. Mr. Oliver, thank you, Mr. Lindsay, and Mrs. Lindsay, again, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, we now do, uh, now turn to our next agenda item, agenda item number three, related to the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program for Consideration.
Were we? I apologize, uh, the more I talk, the more I cough.
Oh, dear, that's all right.
I'm trying.
It is the season.
Yes, I know. Um, so, here we are with the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program for Consideration. What I've done is go back through, um, all the town meetings that we've had, that we talked about this program, and kinda highlighted the points, so we all understood what the program was, and then addressed any concerns or questions that you, as the board, brought forward, and then tried to address those. You see, the first section talks about why, why offer this program. I'm not gonna read through it all. Basically, the program offers affordable repair plans backed by vetted local contractors. It offers three letter, levels of service to the water line, the sewer line, and the interior plumbing. It is a completely voluntary, um, program. If a resident would like to sign up, they simply call a toll-free number and, um, sign up, or they can sign up online. There's support available 24/7 through 65 days a year. These notes come from the July 10th meeting, so this was the initial presentation. There's no cost for the town to offer the warranty program. We talked about the revenue stream, where the town can choose to receive, receive 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract to be used, see, to be used how the town sees fit. If we didn't want to receive the revenue stream, then it would cost the, the cost of the program to, um, anyone that signs up would be reduced by 50 cents. The town would have access to an online portal that lets the town know who's enrolled in each project, the claims, or product, the claims that are filed, and then the resident satisfaction survey results. So, we do have access to that information, which I think there was some confusion on. Customer care, talked about that, there's no minimum participation required. If we just have one resident sign up, they will do the program. The program is strictly residential, however, apartment buildings would be eligible as long as the property owner gives approval, and there's one service line. The service is available to anyone regardless of length of time, depth of line, age of line, and the pricing would be the same. The only deterrent would be if the residence line is not working at the time, but they do not come out and inspect the lines. Outside water and sewer coverage includes up to 8,500 coverage per incident, and there's no limit on the number of incidents that you can report. The interior plumbing and drainage coverage is up to 3,000, um, coverage per repair incident, and same thing. You can have as many, many claims, um, there's no cap on the number of claims. Pricing, external water line is 575, external service line is 775, in-home plumbing is 999. Their marketing approach, talked about that briefly, the limited mailings per year. Letter mailed on town, letterhead signed by the mayor. We have had some discussions since then that I will address a little bit further in this. The conclusion of that meeting, um, you, you asked for more review of the information. So, it was brought back on August 7th. Commissioner O'Donnell, you were concerned about only one plumber, local plumber being used for service calls. NLC stated they, they get two to three plumbers locally, and the organization already has some licensed plumbers in Thermont. In addition, the previously mentioned requirement, the plumber may, agrees to call a resident within one hour and be at their home within 24 hours if a claim is filed. The town can be as involved in the contractor selection process as it desires. Commissioner Buckman, you had some questions over other municipalities. Commissioner Ritz, Ritz, excuse me, asked about terracotta piping, and they do work with terracotta piping. Commissioner Sweeney expressed his support for the program. We discussed the property owner and one service line. The conclusion of the August 7th, 7th meeting, the town, the board decided to bring the topic back at a public hearing on October 16th. The concerns were endorsing one company over another and liability. At that public hearing, we had another presenter from National League of Cities. Commissioner Buckman inquired about a program offered through Frederick County, and the concerns for the board were as follows, endorsing one company, liability agreement, marketing letter, letter, and Frederick County Emergency Housing Rehabilitation Program. And the board directed staff to look into these items, which I did. So, moving on to endorsement, John Clapp states, "I do not find any law that which, which would prohibit the town from endorsing this product or program. It is also my view that endorsing this particular product or program would not create any binding precedent that would require the town to endorse other products or programs in the future." The liability on page 26, um, and I'm just summarizing, um, some things through here. John Clapp, "I cannot find any law in Maryland which makes a person who endorses a product liable if that product is defective and causes injury or damage. The agreement does provide that the company will indemnify and hold the town harmless against any such liability that is good." As we've discussed, anybody can sue anybody for any reason, that we, there is a possibility of being sued, whether or not we endorse this program or not, just based off the, the nature of the business. I had some discussions with Thermont, and they're under the impression that since the, the work is being performed on private lines, on private property, and by third-party contractors, the town is not incurring liability. I had Mr. Clapp review the agreement, and you'll see that he had a couple concerns on the agreement, the language that he would like changed. They state it's a non-inclusive license, but it doesn't state it in the body of the, the agreement. He'd like that language changed. He suggested adding language to state that not only does the law in Maryland apply, but the jurisdiction and venue of any legal action will be in Frederick County, since the company is, um, they're a Pennsylvania company. The letter, which is, um, of concern for the board, the way that it's written, and the town, um, promoting this product or this, uh, this program. And I've had conversations with Ashley at NLC, and I had a conversation with, um, the town of Thermont. Town, towny-town is, has not really gotten it off all the ground yet, they, they just haven't gotten to it. What do you say? "I would suggest some clarifying language to inform the recipient that this is not a town-sponsored program, is sent by the town for informational purposes only. I should clarify that this company is an independent company, not affiliated with the town in any way, and that the town assumes no responsibility or liability for the products being offered." He says, "This is briefly mentioned at the end of the letter, but it's frequently overlooked in fine print, he would want to see that bolded." His suggestion, "I'm not suggesting either way that this program is good or not good, that it should or should not be pursued, this is just my comments." Talked to, um, the town of Thermont, and they agreed. The initial letter was sent on town letterhead with Mayor Kennard's signature. This did cause some hardship and misunderstandings and a lot of phone calls. Subsequent letters have been sent on town letterhead, but signed by a representative of the company, basically saying, "The town of Thermont has partnered with, um, the company to offer its eligible residents protection for repairs to the sewer line water service." It's a voluntary program, it just describes the program. I attached a copy of what their letter looked like. So, I talked to Ashley today via email, and I said, "This is what worked for Thermont. Would you be opposed to doing our letter that way?" And she said, "No, we'd be willing to do your letter that way with their representatives signing that and not having the mayor's signature on it." And then, Commissioner Buckman, you asked us to look into Frederick County Emergency Housing Rehabilitation Program. This is actually a loan program, and it's only if you're income qualified, and if there is funds available... and if there is funds available at the county level at the time of need. Sewer and water lines would be covered. However, it's a loan program. It's zero interest, deferred loan up to fifteen thousand. You have to repay upon the sale or transfer of your property, and there's a lien placed against your property for the amount of the loan. There was a senior one that wouldn't have to be paid back, but the loans may be applied for every two years. And a household of two must have a gross income of below forty-four thousand. And grants may be applied for five years. This probably would not work in an emergency situation or back-to-back claims. So that's basically the information that I believe you as a board requested. And I'll leave it to you now.
Was it determined how much MML was paid for their endorsement?
I was... MML, I think that came out in an email. The one they could not provide us with, the National League of Cities, that was confidentiality. They couldn't provide that one. I do not recall what MML's was.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you trying.
I do have that information, and I can get it for you. I just, I don't have it written down.
Okay, so we turn to the board.